I'd like to call the November 6th Oak Ridge Town Council meeting to order. We don't have anyone to lead the invocation, but I'd like to have maybe a minute of silence, if saying as you're able. Now we can lead ourselves in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
No moves.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Okay, we have two minutes, sets of minutes to order. One, one piece of information about the closed sessions. Everyone but one member of council has signed off on them. If you're okay, that's four people that have signed off on them. So if you want, we can approve them, or if you want, we can wait until the other member has had time to sign off.
That sounds reasonable.
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the October 2nd regular meeting and closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. I don't believe we have any resolution proclamations or announcements. The, I don't think we have a formal report from the sheriff's department, but we do have the crime statistics in the back. You're welcome to pick up a copy of them. They're here, but I don't know that they're ready for a presentation. They're here as security.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
I see.
I mean, if they're, if they would like to speak, they're welcome to, but I believe they're here as security, so, yes. We have a report from the Oak Ridge Fire Department. Yep, just come up. The floor is yours.
Good evening. Hope you all are doing splendidly. This month, we had 80 calls. We had 25 other responses, which include smoke scares, lockouts, animal rescues. We had 10 false alarm responses, one brush fire, one hazardous, hazardous material response, four other hazardous, hazardous responses, which include power lines down, et cetera. We had 38 EMS calls and one structure fire for a total of 80 calls. We had 173.5 training hours. This month's safety message is stay safe this season. Number one, heating safety. Keep anything that can burn at least three feet away from space heaters, fireplaces, and wood stoves. Have your heating equipment and chimneys inspected and cleaned each year by a professional. Turn off space heaters when leaving a room or going to bed. Number two, cooking safety. Thanksgiving is the leading day of the year for home cooking fires. Stay in the kitchen when frying, grilling, or boiling food. Keep flammable items like oven mitts and towels away from the stove top. If a grease fire starts, slide a lid over the pan to smother the flames and turn off the burner. Never use water. Number three, smoke and CO alarms. Test smoke and carbon monoxide alarms and replace batteries if needed. Replace alarms that are more than 10 years old. And number four, candle and decoration safety. Consider using battery operated candles. Keep real candles at least 12 inches away from anything that can burn and make sure that decorations are flame resistant or flame retardant. And that is all I have for you guys this evening.
And I contest that the importance of cleaning the heating and air conditioning system for the first time. We had a false alarm last fall.
Okay.
Because the dust got a little warm and set off smoke alarm, so.
Yes, sir.
It's definitely good advice to maybe get them cleaned.
Something easy to become complacent about, so yes, sir. All right, thank you.
And you guys responded well and you took care of things, so I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, the first item we have is a public hearing. It is a text amendment. Did you want to introduce that or, or anything specific on it?
I can just say a few brief words.
Okay.
This is a text amendment to allow the town to place legal advertisements on the Guilford County website per a state statute that was passed several years ago. Town attorney, Michael Thomas, wrote the ordinance, and I think if there are technical questions about the ordinance, I'd defer them to Mr. Thomas.
And this will save us quite a bit of money bec- well, actually, well, one of the reasons to do this, this will save us money because we will not have to pay to advertise in the news and record. We'll just be able to put it up on the website, so. Is there anything you would like to add, Mr. Thomas, before we open the public hearing?
No, this is simply, uh, amending the ordinances to provide and avail itself of electronic advertising.
You, use your microphone.
This simply amends the ordinances so the town is saying it will use electronic advertising as one of the authorized forms of legal advertising and having, once you adopt this, then the town can execute the contract with Guilford County to utilize its website for the town's advertising. So it's, it's preliminary to signing the contract with Guilford County to do that.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. A public hearing has two sections. There's people who want, that can speak in favor and people to speak in opposition. People that wish to speak in favor will have 20 minutes to speak in favor of it, and then there'll be 20 minutes for people who would speak in opposition. If there are two people speak on both sides, then there'll be five minutes for rebuttals. Is there, well, all we ask to do is come up, state your name and address, and you'll have the floor. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this amendment? Is there anyone who speaks in opposition? Yes, sir.
Frank Carroll, 1389 Forsyth Road, Kernersville. The question that I have and the, what I'm actually opposed to is if you look in A1 in the proposed ordinance, it says, notice shall be by first class mail to the last address listed for such owners, which are within 500 feet of a proposed rezoning. And then number two, the person or persons mailing such notices shall certify to the town council that proper notice has been given and such certification will be deemed conclusive in the absence of fraud. I know of, is one example that went through this council where a landowner, a significant landowner, 60 feet away from the proposed development did not receive mail. The only way we found out about it was because of the sign on the property, that was placed on the property. The question that I have is, is that why are you allowing the developer, the person that's proposing the change, to self-certify? You have staff. Why don't you go out and act so you make sure that they've done what they said they were supposed to do? That's it, you know, just why are you allowing self-certification? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Okay, since someone did speak in opposition, there's a five-minute period of time for anyone who speaks in favor of this to rebut or to clarify. Anyone wish to speak in favor for the five minutes? If not, we'll close out the public hearing portion and turn it over to council for initial discussion or a motion.
Mayor.
Yes, sir. Yes. Yes.
Provisions cited by the gentleman are not part of the amendment. The only parts of the ordinance, and this is the development ordinance that requires a hearing of a technical amendment, that's why we're having this hearing tonight. The only portions that represent new language that pertains to electronic advertising is the underlying language in the text amendment. The gentleman's reference is the state law provisions that the ordinance tracks. It's not the town's language, that's the statute's language from chapter 160D.
Yes, and actually later I would have recommended you to bring that case to our attention and we'll, we'll address that separately, but like tonight, we're not dealing with that. Thank you. Again, council, we can have discussion or a motion, it's up to you. Any comments, discussion, or is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the text amendment to section 3035, notice Town of Oak Ridge Development Ordinance to include electronic notices as authorized by law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stone, you made the motion, any comments?
No, I, I think this is just the outcropping of going from 1980 to 2025. Electronic notices are just commonplace, and I just think that it, it doesn't forbid us from doing other forms on, in the paper, whatever, but it just gives us another tool in the box.
Ms. Schneider?
No, agree.
Mr. Harden? I have no additional comments. It will save us some money. With no further discussion, is the motion is made in second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, we have our first section of public comments, and what we do is we allow community organizations to get first dibs, so we have, we have a report from the Triad Municipal ABC Board. State your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hello, Jim Barberry, 7903 Quiet Place, Oak Ridge. I'm reporting on, for the Triad Municipal ABC Board. Sales have been soft. As I've said before, this is a trend throughout North Carolina and the rest of the country. We are doing everything we can to minimize costs to try to offset the slow sales. However, distributions may be down somewhat this year. Just for interest, Christmas inventories are in the store, so if you need any little decorative glasses, you can go get them now. And our law enforcement group has tasers now, they've been added to their repertoire. They were donated, we didn't pay for them, and a policy has been put in place for the use of the tasers. Our quarterly distribution to our town this year for July through September is $41,750. Any questions?
Nope.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, appreciate it. Now, the public comment section is now open for anyone and from the public that would like to speak, just raise your hand, step up, and the floor is yours. Adrian, I think your hand went up first.
Good evening, Adrian Eckerenrod, 5679 Timber Trace Way. Good evening, mayor and council. I want to take a moment and congratulate Ann Schneider and Lindsey Clark on their election to the Oak Ridge Town Council. I also want to express my heartfelt appreciation to all those who supported my campaign. Your encouragement, conversations, and belief in service meant so much to me. While the outcome is not what I'd hoped for, I am deeply grateful for the trust so many of you placed in me. This experience has encouraged my commitment to our town, and I intend to remain actively engaged in the months and years ahead. Oak Ridge's future matters too much to step aside. I encourage all of us to stay engaged in the work of preserving Oak Ridge's character and unity. Our town is strongest when neighbors step forward with courage, humility, and hope for the future. Though elections mark endings and beginnings, the real story of Oak Ridge is written every day by the people who care enough to participate. I am committed to being part of that story, and I look forward to continuing this journey with you and offering myself again as I can in two years. Thank you and God bless.
Anyone else wish to speak? Ty?
Ty Lindsey, 8874 Cravenwood Drive. Tonight, I didn't write a speech, guys. I wanted to just come forward and speak from the heart. So first, let me say to the mayor and remaining council, thank you guys so much for giving me the opportunity and, and to, to be a part of the election. To the winners, Ann and Lindsey, what an amazing, what an amazing fight we had, but we had an ethical fight, we had a fun fight. We, we had the opportunity to stand with each other, talk with each other, and, and I honestly believe that we broke some records somewhere. We had some voters come out, and I was absolutely amazed and overwhelmed by the support that Oak Ridge offered me and gave me in terms of coming out to the polls to vote. I stand for Oak Ridge, Oak Ridge strong. I will continue to fight for Oak Ridge as well as the citizens of Oak Ridge. As, as Adrian said, I will be back in another two years to possibly run again, and I hope, I hope that I get the same support that I got November 4th. It was an absolutely amazing time, absolutely amazing night. We had the opportunity to hug people, we had the opportunity to speak with people about their, their concerns, right? And, and listening to the citizens is one of the major parts of why we take on the responsibility, why we put our heart and souls into what we do, why we put our names on the line. And so, just being a part of it, I, I think I came in here tonight and I told someone, I'm still in campaign mode. I, I still feel like I'm running for office, even though I lost, but hey, either way, I had a great time. Thank you all so much to the council, to Oak Ridge, to Oak Ridge citizens. I loved everything about it, and you haven't seen the last of me. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ty.
Any, Lindsey?
Hi, Lindsey Clark, 6816 Koala Drive. Yeah, I just wanted to take another opportunity to say first, thank you to my supporters who came out and voted for me on election day or early, early voting. It really means a lot. One, the chance to speak with you all and kind of, you know, like Ty said, hear your concerns and the direction that you want to see Oak Ridge going, and I really appreciate the trust that you put in me to be the change that you want to see on Oak Ridge Town Council, so I hope to make you proud and I'm ready to get to work on what we talked about and my commitments that I made. I'd also like to acknowledge first, congratulations, Ann Schneider, also on winning a, a seat on town council, winning a reelection. And to the other candidates who did not win a seat, you know, we put in so much time and hard work on our campaigns, and I really appreciate the, the dedication, the commitment that you all made. I know that we all wanted to see what's best for Oak Ridge and, you know, work to represent that. I'm very fortunate that I got that opportunity, and I'm glad to hear that you all have not backed away and that you plan on doing what you can to support Oak Ridge still in the future. And lastly, to people who I did not earn your vote, you know, I hope to, in the future, months or years, earn your confidence that I am here to serve Oak Ridge for all of you, and I hope to do a good job of that. So I look forward to joining you all next month. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, we'll close out that public comment section and move on to the manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item is consideration of the reappointment of Ron Simpson and Craig Rosenfeld as regular members of the Planning and Zoning Board and the Board of Adjustment, and also appointment of Jeff Richter and Moses Perry as members of the Mountains to Sea Trail Committee.
We can do that as separate motions or one motion if you like?
I move that we reappoint Ron Simpson and Craig Rosenfeld as regular members of the Planning and Zoning Board, and that we appoint Jeff Richter and Moses Perry as members of the MST Committee.
Is there, is Jim Harden's second? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Ayes have it.
The next item is consideration of the 2026 Town of Oak Ridge meeting schedule. Please take note that in the months of January, April, and July, the standard first Thursday meeting date of town council has been moved to the second Thursday to avoid conflicts with holidays. And I'd also point your attention to the proposed date of the Capitol Improvement Plan annual meeting, which is typically held the second Wednesday of February, and that date is set on the meeting schedule is February the 11th at 10 a.m.
Is there a motion to approve the schedule?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? I'd like to make one passing comment. I would ask the council for 2027 to take a serious look at moving the council meetings to the second Thursday of the month. The reason I make that argument is we basically, 25% of our meetings are already moved. We also have situations where, for example, in May, they typically, the city vision conference is held the first week of the month, and there are several sessions where staff would benefit from being able to go to that, but because they're preparing for a meeting. There are also occasions where I know Sam has to kind of either not give us a report because the meeting's on the first of the month, so he doesn't have time to prepare the meeting. Doing it in the second week will not necessarily change Sam's schedule, he'll still be able to prepare the report whenever he feels like it, but it also will give council a couple extra days to review the report. I understand there may be some scheduling issues for members of council. Also, the other big reason I push for it is that members, residents will never have to look at the calendar to see when the meeting is, because if it's the second Thursday of the month, there's only, I haven't been able to come up with a reason why we would ever move it from the second Thursday of the month, so people would know that the second Thursday of the month is always town council. So I would just ask you to maybe over the next year, start thinking about that, and maybe when the 2027 calendar comes up, you consider moving it to the second Thursday because of all the benefits it would give. An opportunity may come up to, maybe in your personal schedules, allow you to have that flexibility, but I would just ask you to place that idea in your head for consideration in 2027. The items and motions, and second, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, the ayes have it.
Next, requesting approval of the 2026 Town of Oak Ridge observed holiday schedule. As per our usual, we follow the holiday schedule as adopted by the state of North Carolina.
Is there a motion to approve the holiday schedule?
So moved.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, ayes have it.
Next is a request to renew the annual stormwater engineering contract with Fries and Nichols. Fries and Nichols has served as the town's contracted stormwater engineer since 2018, providing responsive and timely plan review, inspection, and enforcement services. Since last year, our annual contract has been capped at $23,000 per year, which is also the cap in this year's proposed contract. Fries and Nichols completes our annual Jordan Lake Rules compliance report, inspects and directs remediation of stormwater devices, reviews stormwater plans for new residential and commercial development, inspects construction, and assists the town in responding to citizen inquiries and violations. And its town, its staffs request to approve the attached annual contract renewal with Fries and Nichols with a not to exceed amount of $23,000.
Do you recall what we've spent with them last year?
I do not, but we've never exceeded the cap, to my knowledge.
Okay, good. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Want to have any discussion? If there's no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed.
For the next item, Assistant Town Manager Sandra Smith is going to present that.
Thank you, council. This is just a housekeeping item. This is to ask permission to destroy some records. As you know, we have adopted the general records and disposition schedule that was created by the state, and we have several, this is, this particular part is just to get rid of audio records, and so I would ask permission that we get rid of all the old, we have boxes of old recordings, by the way, CDs, cassette tapes, everything, and we have some on our, our server that are electronic, but to get rid of all the old town council, planning and zoning board, board of adjustment, and HPC meetings from January 2010 through October 2024, and this will be an ongoing thing. Probably about once a year, I'll bring you a request to get rid of another year's worth.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the request?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? There's no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. And, anything else?
That's all, thank you.
Okay. New business, we have consideration, approval, and appeal to a subdivision sidewalk requirement for River Ridge Farm. We would hear from the applicant.
I think Planning, Sean's going to give a brief.
Oh, Sean, I'm sorry, yeah, Sean, you can give the initial report.
Yeah, the initial, our initial report on this, approximately two months ago, the applicant submitted a subdivision request along with a waiver request to, for the additions of sidewalks on the, for the proposed subdivision. The subdivision has been approved, but it was approved based on the knowledge that sidewalks would have to be installed at that time. That being said, the applicant, they tabled, they wouldn't tabled, they continued the waiver request until the next month for September. At that meeting, they heard the waiver request and denied the waiver request. The applicant has now chosen to appeal the waiver request of the denial of the waiver by Planning and Zoning Board to town council, and that is where we are at now.
Mr. Thomas, is there anything you might want to add? I mean, based upon what you briefed us earlier today, is there any action that we need to take on this specifically? Or is the point, is it? Maybe turn your, turn your mic on.
The council has to find.
Okay.
Supporting facts for the waiver request. That's in the discretion of the council. Other than what I had in the memo, there's nothing else for me to add at this time. It would be with council.
All right, appropriate, I guess, to ask the applicant to come up. Would the applicant please come up, identify themselves, and make your case?
Mayor Kellerman, my name is Bo Rodenbo, and I am an attorney with the Brooks Law Firm in Greensboro. My address is 1720 Madison Avenue in Greensboro. I appear here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Green Horse LLC, and its principal, Mr. Joe Brady, is here tonight as well. The proposed Brown River Ridge Farm subdivision would include four lots with frontage along Linville Road where there are six historic oaks that are currently located as part of the Barrow Brown House and River Ridge Farm tract. The installation of a sidewalk on those lots would require that the existing historic oak trees be damaged or killed, and we've submitted to the, to the town and Arbor's report to that effect. The installation of a sidewalk is unnecessary to meet the performance standards for walkability in, in Oak Ridge, as there's already a sidewalk directly across Linville Road from the lots that are in question here, and that existing sidewalk appears in the photographs that we submitted with our packet for the board's consideration. The town adopted its first future land use plan back in 2003. At that time, the subject property was designated as within the town core. An updated future land use plan was adopted in 2016, and that update redesignated the property as within the town core transition zone. Town ordinance 30-862 requires sidewalks on all streets within the town core, but references the 2003 future land use plan rather than the version adopted in 2016. The ordinance, as interpreted and applied by the Planning and Zoning Board, would require Green Horse LLC to install sidewalks on this property, even though it is no longer located within the town core. So our arguments for the facts that would support a waiver here are that the application of the sidewalk ordinance would not meet the, the provisions of the future land use plan that locate this property now in the town core transition zone, which does not require the application of sidewalks. In addition, installing these sidewalks would violate the historic preservation goals of the Town of Oak Ridge. This property is one of the most historic in Oak Ridge. The, the oak trees that front on, on Linville Road are some of the most historic in Oak Ridge and are, are covered by the, the town's historic preservation plan. So we believe these, these oaks, the preservation of these oaks are required under Town Ordinance Section 30-996, as we've recited to you in the, in the packet that we submitted. The town's goals of historic preservation and walkability are best served by connecting the proposed subdivision to the existing sidewalk located on the opposite side of Linville Road by means of a crosswalk across. Linville Road by means of a crosswalk across Linville Road. And there's even been some discussion with NC DOT about even lowering the speed limit in that section of Linville Road, if that's what the town was of a mind to do in order to make a crosswalk more, more usable. We believe that this, this alternative would better perform under the land development ordinance for the town as well as under the provisions for maintaining historic oaks in the, in the, in the town of Oak Ridge. For all these reasons, we respectfully request that the council grant our request for a waiver of the requirements of ordinance 362 as applied to this property.
Thank you. Mr. Stone? Comments? Questions?
Sure. I'm not convinced that the, the land use plan, the 2016, I don't know that that's interpreted correctly. I think that our ordinance is there, or, and what we have in place is, is good. I don't see an issue there. I do think that there are some conversations the council will have concerning other parts of, but I don't have any questions for the applicant.
Ms. Snyder? Any questions or initial comments?
I'm not sure I understood what Mr. Stone said, but in the memo we received today from Michael Thomas, our attorney, I think the argument was made that it should have said the 2016, the most recent plan, which then it is in the transition zone. So I certainly take that part of the argument. Thank you.
Mr. Harden?
Just a question, what I heard, sorry, I'll mess this up. Mr. Rodenbo.
Yes.
You, you said the, you made a proposal of crosswalk connections across the street, and certainly there's already, already sidewalks in front of this very unique piece of property that, I mean, certainly is clearly part of Oak Ridge history. And the trees certainly give, give a great frame for that whole piece of property. I didn't hear you say who's responsible for the crosswalk. Was that, let me flip again, Mr. Green, Green?
Green Horse.
Green Horse.
Horse, or who, who is responsible for putting that crosswalk in?
Well, that, that would be, we would have to make application to NC DOT because Linville Road is a state-maintained road. And, you know, and, and I think the town would have to join us in that application as well. But...
But I think, Mr. Harden, you're asking who would pay for it?
I'm asking who would do it.
Who would do it?
Yeah.
Can, can I comment? I, I would think it would be unlikely that DOT would approve something like that simply because there typically needs to be a sidewalk on the other side of the street for the crosswalk to connect to. That, in my opinion, that's probably an impractical solution.
Okay. Okay. I don't have any questions for you at this time. If it's okay, I'll start the conversation. I think everybody understands that I am a big, big advocate of sidewalks. Even without the language that we got from our town attorney today, I was skeptical of the desirability of requiring a sidewalk in that area. The reason I make, part, part of my reason for making the argument of maybe not having, require a sidewalk on the, on the other side of the trees is if we ever did sidewalks the rest of the way up Linville, the house on the corner of Linville and Skoggins, about the only way we'd be able to put sidewalk there would be able, would be if we put in what's called curb and gutter. Because the sidewalk would be so close to the street, you'd have to put a gutter, a curb in to kind of protect the sidewalk. So that's one of the reasons why I would be in favor of providing the waiver. But I believe also, the direction we got from, from our town attorney kind of tells us that I don't think we legally are required, I, I don't think a developer is legally required to have a sidewalk there. If I understood your, your, your notes, is that true?
I didn't specifically address that, but I think that's correct, actually. There's not a, Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, there's no sidewalk requirement within this subdivision?
They're in, well, within, if, the 2016 land use plan and the sidewalks are not required within the transition zone.
I was asking, within this subdivision itself?
Within the subdivision, no, there's no.
That's right. So, but when I talked to, I did talk to Mr. Rodenbo earlier today, and I, I said, in terms of a, a crosswalk, I said, you'd need a sidewalk on the other side. There is a street where going in to serve these, two of these houses. It would be possible to put a sidewalk of some length along part of that, at least, if you wanted something to join on that side, and then apply to NC DOT, as was said. Now we've got two sidewalk on each side, must put a crosswalk in. And the folks in the upper lots would presumably cross on the backside of their lots or along the street to get to that. But you would have, that would be the way you would connect up, it seems to me. How you get there through the process you're involved in right now is possibly in the subsection of the waiver ordinance, which says you can condition a waiver. So you could put a condition on a waiver. Mr. Harden asked me about securing an easement for future uses, if and when the trees die or somebody takes down the historic house, which I presume would be an HPC matter, if that ever got, got to it. My feeling about that was that you'd really have to condition that easement a lot to avoid non-preservationist feeling to intervene in the future. People that maybe aren't as concerned as you are with preservation. So I would not recommend a bread and butter garden variety easement as a condition. But you could do something by way of conditioning if you wanted to secure an application for a crosswalk. I just suggest it.
Okay.
But that's how you would go about that.
Mr. Stone, would you like to continue the conversation?
I'm ready to make a motion if...
Does anyone else want to make any initial comments before a motion's made?
That's fine.
Go ahead and make a motion.
I make a motion that specific findings of fact exist as such that a waiver is appropriate and should be granted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stone, you made the motion. Any discussion?
Yeah. So planning and zoning did their job. They applied the ordinance. So this is not a commentary on that. But under Section 3831, grounds for waiver, it says that grounds for wavel, for waiver have to have some specific findings of fact. I believe those circumstances exist. It says physical hardship where, because of the size of the track being subdivided as topography or conditions of the nature adjoining areas and such, strict compliance with the provision of this article would cause unusual and unnecessary hardship. I believe that exists based on the fact that those gorgeous 100-year-old trees are right there, and I'm not sure that there are too many people that would pick sidewalks over trees if you had to choose between the two. And the other one is equal or better performance, wherein the opinion of a waiver will result in equal or better performance in the furtherance of the purpose of the ordinance. I think that equal or better is been listed out. There's a sidewalk directly across the street. If there are some opportunities to have a crosswalk somewhere close to or adjacent to the property, I think that that's, that's appropriate. That's a DOT thing, and it's not part of this. But I, I do believe that there are, in fact, findings that are limited in scope for this particular case, and it doesn't create a general precedent, it's just for this specific case.
Okay. Mr. Harden?
I have a tendency to agree with Mr. Stone, but I have a question on the sidewalk across the street. Is, looking for mountains to the sea people here? I don't see, oh, sorry, you were being blocked. Is that sidewalk that's being referred to across the street, is that not part of the, the mountains to the sea thoroughfare that connects and then comes into the town parks through that sidewalk? Okay. So it's, it's something that will be kept up.
Just for, just for record, she shook her head yes.
Yeah. Okay. But the, it is, it is part of the thoroughfare. It's not a trail, but, and therefore it would be well-kept and, and appropriate for pedestrian transport.
Ms. Snyder?
Yeah, I, I agree that with the findings of fact, and certainly the trees are beautiful, the space is small, there is a hardship. It is great that there's a sidewalk across the street, and I'm in favor.
Yeah. And I just want to reaffirm, I, I think if we ever did do a sidewalk on that side of the street, we would probably have to do a bit of curb and guttering anyway. And so if, if the sidewalk went in and out, in and out, in and out, it would be a little less, less efficient and less thing. You know, so that's why, that, on that alone, I think it's, it's appropriate for, and also, like I said, the trees, you know, there's no reason those trees aren't going to be around for a while longer. So I definitely would, would prefer a solution that doesn't put those trees at risk, so I also there. So if there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? You have your waiver. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I add, a piggyback from our council's email? And, and I'm, forgive me, but I'm going to use some of your, your terminology here. Is, based on the opinion and advice of our legal counsel, we should instruct staff and the planning board to proceed under the 2016 future land use plan with regards to this and other development applications on residential transition zone, or transition area, are delineated in the 2016 future land use plan, and to initiate the procedure for technical revisions of Section 30-862 of the development ordinance to delete the reference to the Oak Ridge future land use plan adopted May 2003 and substitute the reference to the Oak Ridge future land use plan adopted January 2016 and is modified February 2016. I'm not asking that as part of a motion, but to...
Well, I would ask, is, is that something we can do? Can we do that tonight, or do we need to, need to do something a little more formal?
Right.
So we'd have to go through a hearing process? Okay. So I was going to say, if we could, we'd just go ahead and do it tonight, but we have to go through a formal process.
And just to piggyback on that, where we're already working on doing the
Yeah.
overall comprehensive update to our ordinance, within our draft, I've already made that change.
All right. Thank you. Monthly finance report.
Again, the most invigorating part of the night. Everyone should have received a copy of the finance officer's report and a copy of the financial statements. For the activity, we received ACH wire transfer, property tax of $21,447 for September, motor vehicle taxes, excuse me, that should have been October. I fat-fingered that one. Motor vehicle taxes of $10,845 for a total of $32,29218. This was all collections through October 31st. For the month, we had our normal sales and property tax collections, interest, planning and zoning fees, the ABC distribution that was already mentioned, and we had donations to HPC and the Veterans Honor Green, town special events revenues, and some general park revenues. Investments in the depository banks are being monitored. With the Fed rate reductions, we're starting to see indications of a possible softening on some of the interest rates being paid. We're addressing that by looking at various options with all of our depository banks, whether it's CDARS or variants thereof, or money markets, or other CDs. So we're, you know, trying to look forward and plan. The other thing, the Waterline Capital Project Fund has been established with a checking account. Everything on that's ready to go. The checks are being ordered, so when we start getting the bills on that, we'll be ready to go. Grant compliance, we've been supportive on that. This is ARPA, the CIP process, and work on the water system. Annual audit is still underway, with completion anticipated by Thanksgiving and presentation at the December meeting. Overall, a fairly quiet month. Our total assets are at $2.869 million, with liabilities of 70, basically $73,000, and fund balance of $2.796 million. So as usual, strong balance sheet position. Behind this is all the detail. We did have quite a number of checks and everything this year, this month. So the expense portion and the detail of the funds is, is a little on the thicker side because we did have more bills this month, wrapping up some things with various projects and with just, it's the timing year for some of the annual fees and such as that cycle. So overall, very normal month. We are monitoring, I have just gotten reports today through the fire department on motor vehicle collections. I'm still monitoring and watching on that because of the past errors. The latest I do have with Guilford County is that they still are feeling confident about rectifying any of the collection issues based on the underlying mapping as far as where a person is. They are down to motor vehicle taxes in one fire district. That's the only overlay that they're still concerned about, and they're still working on. All the rest have been tested. So that gives us a good rate of assurance that what we are being told and what numbers we're receiving are in fact accurate and everything is resolving. Because we did have some individuals that reside in the town of Oak Ridge that are over near the Happy Hill Road, Warner Road area. And one of them was a client of mine who did not receive his property tax on part of his property for four years. And the county, he showed me the letter, the county acknowledged it was nothing town, it was all on them. So they did handle that, and they are legally doing the collection. So all of those appear in our area to have been resolved. So we should be moving forward fairly easily now.
Right.
Okay.
Cool. Is there a motion to accept the finance officer's report? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you, as always.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sam.
Mr. Harden, we didn't have all these committee reports, so how many Howartons are we up to?
We're up to four Howartons.
Okay. All right. All right. So we're gonna, we're gonna use, just so you know, Roger Howarton has the record for the shortest meeting, and we're now measuring our town meetings in Howartons, so.
With, with respect to Roger.
Yes. Okay. We have committee reports. Historic preservation? Okay.
Meet?
No.
I don't think they met this month.
Okay. Planning and zoning?
I think we heard.
Yeah. Board of adjustments did not meet. Mountains to sea. I understand you have some very exciting news. No, you got a bridge. You got the final bridge.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That is exciting. Hi, Anne Steele, 8927 Grove Park Drive, Oak Ridge. We held our monthly meeting at town hall on October 28th. The minutes from the September 23rd meeting were reviewed and approved. Project updates. The headwaters, well, we've got beavers, and they've been wreaking havoc over there. They've been very active and determined to build a den on the Linville Road entrance side of the trail. This has caused some flooding on the trail. And Joel, myself, and Bill Bruce went over and checked things out to try to get an understanding of the impact and what options we might have. We've kind of lost count how many times committee members have gone over there, torn down the dams, and cleared drainage areas. We will continue to monitor this situation. Bill contacted experts with the Department of Agriculture, and we are consulting with them about the best course of action there. The Pemberley Carriage Cove Trails, that's where we have our final completed bridge. The Pemberley Carriage Cove Trails, that's where we have our final completed bridge. On October 22nd, we had a fantastic workday with VF Corp. There was over 20 volunteers that came and helped us out there and performed a lot of maintenance on the trail, and so that trail's really in good condition right now. A portion of the MST committee meeting in November will be dedicated to talking about name ideas for the new trails. We're going to be walking the trails and coming up with ideas, and then brainstorming ideas and coming up with a list. So if anyone has any suggestions that you'd like your name on the trail, let me know. Once there's a list, it will be provided to the community through Facebook posts and an email blast, and people will have the opportunity to vote. And the names that gets the most votes will be awarded, the new names on the trails. These will not be part of the MST trails as we have no way to get out currently, so they will just be part of the Oak Ridge Trails system for now. Scout update, we have a scout who is working on, as been mentioned before, on the Headwaters Trail, creating kind of informational, educational boards over on the Headwaters Trail, and his project was approved by the scout's Eagle Board of Review, and so he's continuing to work with Mike Kimmel, who's a member of our committee, on the best place to place the signs and also what content to include. The new parking lot at Scuba Tools is complete. Wow, I talked longer. Sorry. Real quick, the drainage will need to be monitored, and next steps are adding signage and a kiosk. Do I need to stop? I'm really almost done. We're excited to welcome Frank, Jeff, and Moses to the committee. We're super excited about that. And there's a workday scheduled for Wednesday, November 12th.
Excellent. I'm really excited about that, about the whole trail. Thanks.
I can't believe I talked over a minute.
It's all right. All right, conservation easement committee? I don't believe they met.
Didn't meet.
Special events? Now Patty can have special dispensation. Do you need special extra time? Okay.
Patty Dumczewski, 7320 Hidden View Drive. Veterans Honor Green, everything's in place for the special dedication for the boardwalk at the Veterans Day Ceremony. The landscape architects, Anna and Mark Reeves, plus Shannon Parker from Parker Construction here in Kernersville, who actually built the boardwalk, will be in attendance. The Veterans Day Ceremony again will be on Tuesday, November 11th, at the Veterans Honor Green at 10:00 a.m. Our guest speaker will be retired Lieutenant Colonel Christian Costelli. The Oak Ridge Baptist Church Band will perform, and the Oak Ridge Methodist Choir will perform also. Our scouts are also going to participate in the ceremony. Flyers have been placed all around town, and we hope you will be able to join us. Light up the night, we're gearing up for our Light Up the Night event on Saturday, December 6th. Additional lights and stars and special light up for Santa and his reindeers have been ordered. We'll be looking for volunteers to help put out the 1,300 luminaries on the weekend after Thanksgiving. Amy Kerikoff will send out a sign-up genius, a genius, to have volunteers sign up. Folks are welcome to stay for an hour or several hours, and we hope to see you all there. 2026 will be the 25th anniversary of 9/11. I was able to secure a donated piece of steel cut from the core beam of Tower II of the World Trade Center from D.H. Griffin Wrecking Company in Greensboro. I'll be meeting with Parks and Rec Advisory Board next week to see if I can get their approval for a small memorial in the Oak Ridge Park by the flagpole with the steel piece and a small plaque detailing the events of that day. Farmhouse Open House, the special events committee will have a table at the Farmhouse Open House this Sunday. We'll be handing out information on our committee and trying to get some additional volunteers to serve on the committee. Thank you. Any questions?
Thanks, appreciate it. Tree board.
Good evening, Council. My name's John Browning. I live at 824 Linville Road. The tree board met this morning, and we planted a good-sized white oak tree, about 15 feet tall, three-inch caliper, boll and burlap tree. Tree looks great and looks nice, and we're proud of the fact that Oak Ridge has a distinction and honor of being Tree City, USA by the Arbor Day Foundation. And this planting satisfies one of the requirements for us to maintain that status. So again, we're proud of that, and again, it's a white oak tree, and it's my understanding that most of the historic homes in Oak Ridge were framed with white oaks. We thought that was a perfect choice to be used to plant more of those trees, and we do appreciate the fact that y'all chose a tree over the sidewalk in the earlier matter, so we picked that too. Mentioning the historic Oak Ridge, just a little plug for Sandra Smith's book that most of the, again, the house is in this historic district, use white oak trees, and again, that's an excellent book that Sandra has done, and we'll probably hear more about that soon, but anyway, any questions or comments?
No, thank you as always. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Parks and Rec?
Adrian Ekinad, Parks and Rec co-chair. The Farmhouse Community Center, well, actually, Parks and Rec did not meet last month. We did not have any agenda items, but we will be meeting next Thursday. The Farmhouse Community Center walkway issues are being addressed over the next few weeks. However, the Farmhouse is already being rented several times, and rentals are now available, and people may reserve it on myrec.com. As Patty mentioned, there will be a tour event this Sunday, November 9th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. This is a floating event, there'll be light refreshments and copies of the historical Oak Ridge book will be on sale and available, and of course, our author Sandra Smith will be on site for book signings. We also look to offer additional tours in the spring. We're planning an open house to coincide with our first Music on the Lawn event, which is currently scheduled for Sunday, May 31st, 2026.
Thank you. Finance committee didn't meet, but I just want to give you a heads up, finance committee season will be starting, what, in February typically? Late February? March? Okay. But it'll be here quicker, sooner than you think. The finance committee is citizen-staffed, and they do a line-by-line review of it, so I encourage you to attend if you want to participate in any of the finance committee activities. Water advisory committee, they're going to have, I don't think anyone's here, but they're going to have a drop-in on November 13th from, what, 4? What time?
From 4:30 to 6:30, yes, Thursday, November 13th here at Town Hall to ask questions for those citizens interested in the new waterline.
Yeah, because the waterline will be coming down 150, and residents will be able to hook up voluntarily. There's, except for new development, there's no requirement to hook up to the water main. The only requirement to hook up would be new development, or if your well goes bad. So, okay. All right, we have our second public comment section.
Before you leave the water...
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Harton.
I mean, for those that have been looking behind Town Hall, the deliveries of the supplies to start the tower itself are starting to arrive, they're in a delay pattern, I think, due to trucking, not so much anything else, but this, if you look, you'll see it's pretty big stuff back there. And trucking has to be, it's a special kind of trucking that's required to bring that from Nebraska to Oak Ridge. So I would, you should, certainly by Christmas, start seeing a tower that's elevated, maybe not complete, but certainly a tower, a water tower that will form the first bit of infrastructure for the first water, leg of the water system that then will be brought from the county line up up Oak Ridge Road to Linville and hopefully on to the Commons. That's it.
Yeah, our understanding is, once the steel's here, things will move fairly quickly, so it might be something you might want to come out and watch. It's not, you know, so it goes up, what?
From a distance.
Well, from outside, yeah, from outside the lines, but like I said, my understanding is these are crews that travel around the country, so when they're on site, they want to move quickly, so it might be something...
We will be blasting that on Facebook because a crane will come in, and within a day or two, the thing just goes up.
Yeah, so like I said...
What's the best guess of when it's going to happen right now?
They say November 22nd?
Yeah, in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Excellent. Okay. Public comments. Anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Andrews?
Sam Andrews, 1829 Oak Ridge Road. Nothing dealing with finance. Just wanted to extend a notification. The community has been really good at supporting Moravian, Moravian with the Dewey's pop-up store, as they call them, that we have had for quite a number of years. Due to some things at the shopping center, we have relocated. The Swim Club has very graciously allowed the pop-up store to be there. You will see the little portable store building with its ramp to the left of the Swim Club. It's going to be opening on November the 15th, so for everybody that would need a good Christmas gift that is always appreciated, Moravian cookies are like crack cocaine to most people. I stand guilty of that, but all the goodies from Dewey's, especially the Moravian cookies, but also the church ladies, Moravian chicken pies, apple butter, other craft goods will be there. And so we welcome everybody in the community. It'll be opening on Saturday, November the 15th, and running through, I believe it's December the 23rd. But it'll be right there, plenty of parking, and, you know, very, very gracious of the Swim Club to work with us on that. So we welcome everyone in the community to come by and have a sample. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else wish to speak? I don't see any other hands going up, so we'll close out the public comment section. Since we're going to have a closed session to meet with the attorney, we're going to do our council comments first. Mr. Stone?
Yeah, three quick things. Mike Greason's under the weather tonight. He's probably watching this being live streamed, so get well, Mike. Ann's also under the weather, but she's muscling through, so I hope you get to feeling better. And a public service announcement, forecasting freezing temperatures for Saturday night, so check your outside faucets. If you have hoses connected, disconnect those, but more importantly, shelter your pets indoors, please. It's, when you walk outside, when it goes from 70 to 30, it feels bitterly cold, your pets feel that same thing. Please take care of your pets. Thank you.
Mr. Harton?
Just congratulations to all the people that ran for office, especially to Ann and Lindsay that were successful, but from what we saw, our other two candidates seem to want to be around for the next time around, and that's encouraging. So thank you to everyone for that. I'm, I'll stop now because we're over five Howartons.
Ms. Snyder?
Yeah, I'm not feeling well tonight. I can't really hear very well. Ear infection, not contagious, but since I've gotten through tonight, will mark eight years on town council, and I haven't missed a meeting, so I didn't feel like I could start tonight. I want to thank, as everyone has done, all the candidates and mostly all the voters. We did have the highest turnout that we've ever had of 19%. That's fantastic, and I think having a real range of candidates, you know, from Jim and me as incumbents plus three others, it makes a real difference, and there are strong issues out there. And so thank you to everyone, and again, great conversations at the polls. I really appreciate that. One of the things I did hear that was one of those little tidbits of misinformation was that water is going to bring in development. That's not true, it's not possible. To have apartments, which is what this person was concerned about, you have to have sewer. Water is to serve our fire department almost primarily because they don't have places to fill up their trucks that are easy to get to. We're going to be able to, and the trucks are larger, and the places to fill up in town are more difficult to get to. So they will now have a fire hydrant at the station, and there will be fire hydrants along Oak Ridge Road. All of that is good for their rating, and it's good for our home insurance rates. So this is a great thing for Oak Ridge, and again, as I think Jim said, residents don't have to hook up, but those who have trouble with their private wells in any way, contamination or hitting rock, that sort of thing, they want to connect. And certain neighborhoods, there are a lot of people in my neighborhood, which is behind the elementary school, that are enthusiastic, and then there are places like the elementary school and the Commons that are very enthusiastic, and others. So this is a great thing, it's a service for our town, and our rates are actually going to be cheaper than Aquas, so that's also great. And I think Adrian alluded to the farmhouse being available for rent, even while some last things that the contractor, you know, made some mistakes on and has to fix, so we're not paying more money on it, but I heard today that the farmhouse is, even in this preliminary period, booked solid on weekends through the end of the year. There's a lot of pent-up demand for this kind of indoor facility, and that's why, five years ago, when we did the survey, over 90% of people said they want this some sort of public facility, and staff has always told us that people are asking for an indoor facility. So I think this is a really exciting time, and I'm really excited to be part of the book signing and tours this Sunday, and I hope you'll all come out for that. Thank you.
Appreciate it. I'll have a lot more to say next month on the election and things like that, but I congratulate everyone that won. I also, thanks for everybody that run, that ran, I'm sorry, get my grammar correctly. Every election, I've always felt that everyone's running truly loves this town, and that shows. And so I applaud the people that ran, I also applaud the people that won, so, good job. As always, I will mention blood. If you're able to donate blood, please do. In December, the United Methodist, not United, I apologize, the Oak Ridge Methodist Church will have their even month, so every even month, the second Monday of every even month, the Methodist Church has a blood drive, so you know it's been time long enough that you can donate again. Summit Church has blood drives, Central Baptist has blood drives, so there's many other blood drives, but especially as you get near the holidays, it's an amazing gift you can give that can help three people, so if you're able to donate, please do. The other thing I think you'd like, might find interesting is, the Lions Club has been building a tranquility garden in the park on the far side of Heritage Farm Park multipurpose fields, and it's a nice complete, a place you can sit and commune. Yeah, I can't pronounce the word, that word right now, so I'm not going to continue to try because I'm just going to make it worse. So it's an area, we're going to have trees and things like that planted for, you know, past members of the club. There'll also be an area where if you want to dedicate a tree for your family members or something like that, you can. So we're also, you know, working with the tree board to do that. But we have a very interesting recent addition that you might want to take a trip over there. Danny Yanis found a, I almost life-size lion statue that he has positioned over there, so you may want to take a walk over there tomorrow when it's daylight out and take a look at this statue. Like I said, it is about five, four or five feet tall, I think, so it's a pretty impressive thing. He got it at an auction for a steel. So like I said, it's in a temporary location right now, but if you have a moment, I'd encourage you to take a trip over there and take a look at it. It's pretty, it's pretty impressive, so. With that, that's about all I have. Again, hopefully Mike Greason, wish him the best, he gets better soon, so we can see him again. With that, we're going to go into a closed session, so is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, you shouldn't be that long. Well, you shouldn't be that long.